It's 5:15 on Thursday, July 13, 2017. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. First item would be to pledge to our flag. Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
Yes, I would.
I kind of look left lately, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. For the record, we have five councilmembers currently here. Councilmember Kulas is not here as we speak, and Councilmember Markhardt is not here. I don't know if they've contacted us or not. Maybe they're just running a bit late. I heard traffic was a bit tough.
Markhardt is at the treasures conference.
Okay, so Lyle is not going to be here, okay. So first item on this evening's agenda is the consent items, which includes this evening's agenda, which has been revised. And I don't know if the revised agenda is here. Tammy?
It's here.
You got a revised agenda?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and then vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings.
So, Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meeting with the revised version of the agenda where we have two public meeting, two public hearing items.
Second?
Do we need to specify which items those are?
No, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda as revised, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda would be citizen comment. This would be a time if any member of the audience would like to address the council on something that's not on this evening's agenda, we'd ask that you come up, give your name and address for the record, and give you three minutes or so. Councilmember Kulas, would you like to take up the citizen comment time? Seeing no takers, we will move on to our presentations this evening, the first being Parks and Rec Month. Who's got that?
I have that, Your Honor. Proclamation of the city of Wenatchee. Whereas parks and recreation activities and experiences provide opportunities for people to live, grow, and develop into contributing members of the community, and whereas parks and recreation enriches lives, life experiences for members of our community, and whereas the parks and recreation agencies in the community provide outlets for physical activities, socialization, and stress-reducing experiences, and whereas parks and playgrounds, trails, natural areas, and recreation and aquatic facilities make our city an attractive and desirable place to live, work, and play, and visit, which contributes to our economic vitality, and whereas parks and natural areas provide a welcome respite from our fast-paced, high-tech lifestyles while protecting and preserving our natural environment, and whereas parks and recreation agencies touch the lives of individuals, families, groups, and the entire community, which positively impacts the social, economic, health, and environmental quality of our city. Now therefore I, Frank Coontz, mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim July 2017 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Wenatchee, and encourage all citizens to join me in participating in and supporting the many recreational programs and facilities provided by the public and private agencies. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 13th day of July 2017. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilmember Bailey. Dave Erickson, who else is with you? Oh, come on up. How are you?
I'm good.
Tanner, right? How are you? Nice to see you, David. How are you?
Hey, Mayor.
Good?
Good.
Helped pictures. Do anything on Facebook.
Monday. You want one with just the mayor?
Yeah.
Do it, do it.
Poor Dave. Thanks, guys. Thanks for all your work. All right, the next presentation is something that I was surprised to learn, although I'm sure the rest of you probably knew this, is the city of Wenatchee is celebrating 125 years in service. We were incorporated in 1892. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Even though our first meeting was in 1893, I wasn't there for it, but apparently we incorporated in 1892. So we have a proclamation recognizing 125 years in service, which I will read into the record. So whereas in a fertile valley in central Washington at the confluence of the Wenatchee and Columbia River sits Wenatchee, whereas for thousands of years before settlement, the area was inhabited by indigenous people who lived on the land. With a nomadic culture, the Wenatchee were bound with nature, subsisting on salmon, roots, berries, and nuts, and interacting with other tribes. Whereas the picturesque land slowly attracted newcomers to the area, including fur traders, Chinese miners, cattlemen, and missionaries. Whereas Wenatchee's population in 1891 was 108, and by January of 1892, the population had grown to 300. The year of 1892 was significant in that the Great Northern Railroad built a train depot one mile south of Wenatchee. Whereas in 1892, the Wenatchee Development Company surveyed and plotted the present town site of Wenatchee. The stage was set for Wenatchee's economic and population boom, and the city was incorporated. Whereas with Wenatchee Valley's arid climate, rich volcanic soil, proximity to Columbia, and Wenatchee rivers, in the innovative, hard-working settlers, the town proved to be an agricultural success. Within a few years, the valley was covered with row upon row of young fruit trees. Apples were shipped to all parts of the world, and more and more people, learning of the Valley of the Apples, came here to stay. Wenatchee became the center of the greatest apple-producing region in the world, what we now call the Apple Capital of the world. Whereas as a city dedicated to serving as the Apple Capital of the world, our pioneers had the foresight to establish our government, our streets, a water and sewer system, amazing parks, and fine public buildings, and provided the staff to serve and keep us safe. Today, we benefit from the years of diligent work to be the full-service city of our region, and we continue to set the stage for decades ahead. Now therefore I, Frank Coontz, mayor of the city of Wenatchee, in celebration of the city's 125 years of service, thank all the citizens for their contributions towards the continued success of this fine city. Invite everyone to celebrate with us on Friday, August 4th, at 6 South Wenatchee Avenue, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. In witness whereof, I set the hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 13th day of June 2017. Frank Coontz, Mayor. Congratulations to everyone. Pretty remarkable, 125 years. Next up is the Rotary Park presentation. Hi, guys.
How are you doing?
Rich, how you doing?
Good.
Come on up, sit down.
Want us to sit here?
Yep. You're in the hot seat.
I'm in the hot seat?
Yep.
Well, it's a nice segue having July be Parks Month, that I get to talk a little bit about Rotary Park and where we're going with that. So Mayor Coontz and councilmembers, it is our honor to talk with you. For Randy and I, and probably Steve too, we're hoping this is the last time we have to talk with about construction up at Rotary Park, as we've been on that thing. A little history, April 2nd of 2002, Mayor Johnson met with Julie Bruner and I, and that's really where the first conversation started about Rotary Parks. It's been 15 years ago that we've started that concept. The city adopted a resolution on January 23rd of 03 for us to move forward, and then the park board approved that as well in April. So it's been, I think at that time, we estimated the park to be about $411,000 to build, which we're finding it's a little bit more than that right now. So in the city's part of that, if you might recall, those of you that are around here at that time, was almost $366,000 to clear that site and clear it from the chemicals and stuff that were on there from the orchard. We had a much less cost because we did it in a very innovative way, by scraping the bad soils off, removing the under soils, and then burying it on that park. So anyway, today, it's our last requirement from the IAC grant is a second picnic shelter, and Randy's going to talk a little bit about that project that we're proposing.
Yeah, if you can look at the site plan I just gave you, and you can see where the location of the existing parking lot is, and the basketball court, that this is going to go kind of right out in front of it, 60 feet from either one. The picnic shelter being proposed is identical to the existing one, except for it's two-thirds the size. Instead of three bays, it's going to be two bays. And it will involve additional parking. One of the things we did when we went to our Rotary Clubs to get their approval for us funding this is the comments that came by and just said, "We cannot build another structure there without additional parking." Because we, as you all know, Rotary Park does have a parking problem. So we have included 24 new parking stalls in this, adjacent to the existing parking lot. Do you want to talk about the costs?
Sure. So the estimates that we have at this point in time is the construction of the shelter will be north of 140,000, so about 140,500. And then the parking portion of this is between 25,000 and 30,000. So we're here today to get your approval to proceed with that shelter, and then also ask you to look to see if you might be able to take the parking portion of that and build the parking lot for that portion of the project.
One of the things that needs to be said is, is that the Rotary Clubs are accepting the responsibility for all the funds for building the picnic shelter. So we're going into this thing for 140,000 bucks, of which we already have 90. So we're pretty close right now. What we'd really like to do is, we'd like to get this thing off the ground this fall. We have a little bit of groundwork to do to do that, but any help with the parking lot of this thing would be, would move us along just that much quicker.
David? Come on up.
We haven't, we have to meet with Dave yet. Maybe this is it, huh?
This might be it. Let's see where we're at. Pull up a chair. How are we doing for money dedicated to parks?
It's pretty well gobbled up, especially.
Between the two?
Between Hale Phase 2, Saddle Rock Remediation, some Lincoln Park, Kiwanis Met Hall Park. This is school district money.
Okay. So for us to do the parking lot would be a one-time general fund, finance committee decision?
Okay. And we have Rich scheduled to come next week to the park board.
Okay.
To talk about the project too.
So kind of just for process, go to the parks board. It will come to the finance committee of the council, which met today. We meet again in two weeks, and I think at that point, the finance committee would take it up, and that would be the time when we'd be able to make a decision for sure on the 30,000. I'm guessing we would probably do it, but I got the, the finance committee's got to make that decision.
Did the, did the parking, was it required that the parking be on-site on the property itself, or does it just need to be in the area?
The, the clubs are just knowing that the parking is tough up there, so they're just wanting some parking to be dedicated as this, as this goes. I know those lots right along western would be ideal if somehow that could be donated to the, to our cause. That would help us a great deal, so that's a different subject for a different day, but anyway.
It's a very busy park. I drive by there two or three times a day, and I can't believe, especially this time of year. It's just packed all the time.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great thing. It's neat to see it, so. Busy. It's always busy. I should have pointed out too, Steve's sitting here somewhere, Steve, Randy, and I, for two years spent, so Saturday and Sunday, a lot of work happened on Saturday and Sunday, and there was one of us there every week and day for, for two years. So Steve, I mean, I see him out on a bulldozer at 10 o'clock at night, and I'm thinking, who's working at 10 o'clock at night? Oh, Steve. So.
He doesn't sleep very much, so.
Yeah. Maybe we can get him help with the parking lot. We didn't.
Well, obviously, the Rotary Park's been a huge success, and thanks to the Rotary Club for doing that. I think to the extent the city can help, our parks are getting a ton of use. That one just gets a whole bunch of use, so a second shelter's obviously going to be well-used, and hopefully we'll be able to find a few bucks to help with the parking lot, and you guys can just focus on the shelter. Any questions for the gentlemen while we have them here?
I got an off-ball question. One time we talked about signing up for shelters. Do we do this the same, is Rotary, how do you guys sign up who gets the shelter?
It's a reservation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
So we're still, we, we run that? Okay, I didn't, I didn't know, okay.
And it's all online now, so you can reserve it?
Okay.
I have to say, there are, it's not just the neighborhood using that park. It's people coming from all over Wenatchee, east Wenatchee. It's very popular.
Yeah.
I didn't think the frisbee golf would be used as much as it is, and there's still a bunch of people that travel, you know, from long distances to play that, so.
Yes.
They, they play it all winter.
Keith lives right next to it, so he can.
So yeah, the WSU Landscape Group designed that. I don't know if you guys knew that or not, but Kerry Berg and John Fergan were the two students that actually had the design. What we thought would happen, we'd pick and choose from what we thought was best, but they, they did an excellent job, nailed that thing, and we're really building their park. I mean, it's, it's their, their idea, so hats off to WSU if there's any Cougars in here.
I see a TV cameraman in the back with the WSU shirt on. At least one. All right, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next presentation, Ms. Vidal, Spirit of Wenatchee. Who's got that? Is her, oh, it's not a proclamation, it's a presentation.
Presentation.
Come on up. Hi, Jake.
See, I guess we do this sitting down, huh? Well, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for inviting us here. Let there be no mistake from the get-go, we're here to ask for some money. I'm Jake Ladato, the chief pilot of the Spirit of Wenatchee organization. This is Tim Bovee, president of the Board of Directors. Just a brief history. In fact, let me test the AQ, the aviation quotient here. The first non-stop flight across the Atlantic Ocean was?
Atlantic, that was Lindbergh.
Good guess. 1919, John Alcock and Arthur Brown. Actually, Lindbergh was the 74th. But he was the first to fly solo by himself. Totally different feat. And now, the tough one, who was the first to fly the Pacific Ocean non-stop?
Was it Pangborn?
And where did he land?
East Wenatchee.
All right. So we have a really decent AQ in here. A brief history, the Spirit of Wenatchee was founded in 1998 as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization ostensibly to raise the profile of homeboy Clyde E. Pangborn in the world's historical annals of aviation. We feel like we get shorted everywhere we go. No one has heard of Clyde Pangborn. So we set out now in our 20th year, years ago, to raise this profile. We built the airplane. It first flew in May of 2003 and took off that year, and now in its 15th year of operation, it's been in 40 states, six Canadian provinces, from the Pacific to the Atlantic Ocean, and clear up to Harbor Grace Airport in Newfoundland, where Alcock and Brown took off in 1919 to fly the Atlantic. On the 80th anniversary, the Japanese asked us to have a presentation in Misawa. Tim?
We tore the airplane apart, put it in a container, and took it over, and put it on display. We flew it on two separate years for their celebrations, and they kept it over there in a prominent display in their museum. And then we went back after like about 16 months and tore it all apart, and brought it back home to Wenatchee and put it back together.
It was a great summer in Misawa, and those people, as most of you know, who've spent any time with our beloved sister-city organizations that come and visit, this was a very serious historical event, almost like a lifetime partnership with this city. And it's so fun to visit those people and to have them come here. Last fall, we noticed some roughness in the engine. And Tim, what was that?
So we noticed a little roughness, and during our inspection, we found one of the cylinders. There are nine cylinders, pistons and cylinders, that make the engine go, and you probably hear all of those chugging along when, when we're flying over the parades and stuff. And we found one of them had been, had been succumbed to just a life of 500 hours of flying, and so we had to replace that. That replacement of that cylinder, we were lucky enough to be able to find a, a good used cylinder here from one of our local aviation community, and we were able to get it put back together for about $1,500, more or less. The next one that we have to do, and there will be a next one, is, will probably be a, you know, unless we can find another good deal like that, it'll be at least $3,000. So that's why we're here tonight.
Like most nonprofits, Spirit of Wenatchee struggles with funding and finding viable candidates to serve on its Board of Directors. We've even instituted an agreement recently where before you can depart the committee, you have to find your replacement with your same skill set, but he has to be half your age. This is not easy.
And we, we've been seeing some success in their efforts to recruit newer, new and younger people, and we're, we've got a lot of new, young, enthusiastic people that are coming on board.
Our three most recent departures were Steve Joy, Ron Jacobus, and beloved Arnie Clark, and they all died well-serving, so that's another way to get off the committee.
I was going to say, they couldn't find their replacements and die in their position.
Our funding began.
I'm not sure I want to join the committee.
It's a lifetime appointment.
They were dying to get up.
Our funding began with bake sales. I'm embarrassed to say bake sales, sales of T-shirts and so on. And over the years, because of some major donations from Japan, we've raised over $600,000, spent it on the airplane, most of it on the airplane. And our needs now, since the airplane is built, we've got crews to fly it, and we have people capable of doing the maintenance on it. It's mostly buying parts and putting fuel in the thing at about $5 a gallon for aviation fuel. Ms. Vidal burns 20 to 22 gallons an hour, so you can run, run through hundred-dollar bills the way that boat owners talk about taking a wheelbarrow and just pitching it off the end of the pier. So we're faced with some funding problems. Recent years, we've intensified our T-shirt and sweatshirt and ball cap sales, made a sincere effort to round up all the original donators and ask them if they had an extra 100 or a couple hundred bucks lying around. People have been very responsive. Recently, actually four years ago now, Mayor Lacy was able to convince his council to provide us with an annual stipend of $3,000, which is vital to our continued operation. East Wenatchee Rotary bought us a hangar, and we're so proud of that, and we work on it and keep Ms. Vidal in there, open it up when there's a crowd of people that wants to see. We do have to pay the footprint cost to the port, and of course, we have to insure the building and maintain it, the same kind of expenses that go along with maintaining a $500,000 airplane. So there's insurance and maintenance on the ship. So if there's any possible way that you could squeeze us into that 20-some million-dollar budget for $5,000, it would just be terrific. In fact, that would be manna from heaven. If, if we would qualify for something a little less, we'll take it and run. We've been exploring foundation grants, which is probably what you're wondering, why don't they find somebody to support them? In the local area, we seem always to come up confronting an improvement to the hospice situation, or a new wing on the hospital, or a donation to a burn center or something like that. And it's, I mean, we're not in the same league, I guess is the best word to say that, and it's almost embarrassing to apply for grants and compete, attempting to compete with people like that who are obviously more needy. We're perceived as a little, a bunch of Playboy flyers up there buzzing around town, keeping people awake at night and stuff like that. So one of our goals in this next year is to improve our website, get a little more aggressive about our fundraising, and explore some of the national-quality grants that have to be out there, because I see restoration projects of B-25s and B-29s and B-17s. So there's money out there. We just haven't discovered how to find it yet, but we hope to do that in the next year or so. So we're here to ask for some help in the realm of $5,000, if we could count on something like that. Then along with the east Wenatchee portion, that would kind of cut the nut. And then our efforts with our T-shirts and the sweatshirt sales, and occasionally a donation from people asking to, to come and look at the airplane, that could go toward the next cylinder, and maybe eventually I won't be here, but in 15 years, they're going to have to buy a new, a new engine for it. And that is $50,000 now, by then probably closer to 100. We have become a little bit of an icon, I'm proud to say, around town. This is a recent business journal. The article has nothing to do with Ms. Vidal. It's about getting service from Wenatchee to San Francisco.
Do they pay a royalty for using like this of a Ms. Vidal?
We don't charge for local use like that. We're happy to have the publicity. But it's interesting that Ms. Vidal is the local icon when you talk about airplanes. Early on, the state, Washington, declared us a viable historical and important cultural entity with a, with a proclamation in the state senate, and of course, our local museum tries to keep Clyde front and center every time that they can do something like that. So we feel like we're embedded in the community, that most people don't resent it when they hear the growl overhead, and we try to be an attraction, but when there's a parade and, and something going on on the ground, we don't want to be a distraction. So our presentations are usually kind of short, and I, we hope people's hearts beat a little faster as we zip over. So if you're able to find it in your hearts and in your budget to come up with a few thousand dollars to help us every year, we, we would very much appreciate it.
Thanks, Jake. I know we're just starting our budget process for 2018, so we'll get this into the, at least the rap of that, and we'll also talk about the finance committee when we meet again to see if there's a contribution that we could do for this year and then lead in the next year.
That'd be super.
It would be really helpful, too, if you could include like a budget so we could look at.
Oh, sure. Yes, no problem.
It all goes to parts. All right, any questions for?
Are there any questions for us?
Do you have a grant writer already on your board, or?
We don't. We don't.
That's, that's, that's one of the, that's, part of the things we're trying to recruit is recruit people that are sharp like that, so we're going to ask you guys to come next. Basically, we're looking, actively looking for people that are interested in the project and, and have those kind of talents. For the most part, we have people that are interested in the project, but people like me that turn wrenches and, so.
We have good mechanics, and we have good pilots, but now we need some people with those skills you're describing.
And in this day and age, social media goes a long way, so. Lots of, lots of things done on social media to fund projects like that.
Right. A good, a good person like that would be an easy addition to our board, if you know someone. The committee, the early committee ran best when we had two women on the board. Stuff got done. Stuff got done, and there was a good record of it. I mean, I'm embarrassed to say it, but it ran much better when Pat and Annette were part of it.
And everybody got fed, I'll bet.
Now that sounds like a sexist remark.
Women think about those things, men don't. They just keep going. It was nothing.
I won't touch that word.
Yep.
All right, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, our last presentation, Wenatchee Downtown Association Report. Linda and team.
Free women. Yay! That's why things get done. You know, we always bring gifts.
Oh, thanks, Mayor.
There you go. Thank you. And real men don't mind a pink bag.
Nope.
Right? If there's somebody at home that can probably like that pink bag.
It was with our pink shirts traveler.
It's your incentive for girls hanging out next year, too. Those were the best. So what you find in there is a little, what we'll call a coffee cup, or whatever you'd like to call it, and the Hard of Wenatchee Blend. So the Hard of Wenatchee Blend is a coffee that was specially brewed for us and roasted for us by Cafe Maila, paid for by a great sponsor in People's Bank, and we are selling that right now. There's some roasting notes in there. I didn't know those existed until I was asked about them. I said they're roasted with hints of bricks and mortar, and nobody thought that was as funny as I did. So it's really a good coffee, so Maila will grind it if you don't have a grinder. So thank you very much. I thought about this this afternoon. This is my sixth trip in front of you, Mayor and council, and I want to publicly thank the council for their support of downtown, specifically Councilmember Kulas and Councilmember Asparza that come to our annual, we, monthly, early morning meetings, and they keep us connected, and we. And they keep us connected and we keep them connected. And I want to thank your staff that plugs in sometimes at a moment's notice at weird hours when I text. And we just want to say thank you for the support of the city. 2016 was a good year for us. We said goodbye to Charlotte. A year ago when we were here, we announced that she was taking her talents to Confluence Health where she is thriving in her graphics design. And in August, we welcomed a downtown family member, Meredith Mills-Hilger. And so Meredith joined our team, and in February, two days after I returned from my Mexico trip, she welcomed a baby. So we have baby, James Mills-Hilger is our downtown baby that happens to frequent us on Friday. So if you need a baby fix, I would suggest you pop into the downtown office.
Build it.
And then also the end of December, Steph Gorbich, our board president, her term was up, and another downtown hometown girl, Stacy Dorey Asher, became our board president, who's here with me today. So you have a downtown history family sitting in front of you. We love our downtown. Steph did not remain as past president. She is no longer in Wenatchee. So we have a strong board, and I believe we're growing and changing and going places. In 2016, we saw some businesses end, like Mills Brothers', and we saw some new businesses start. We also saw substantial turnover in property owners in downtown, highly unusual for an historic downtown. So we saw many buildings change hands. So that tells us there's new interest, new money, new love of their historic downtown. So we'll see some more of that. You're gonna see some more businesses go out of business this year and new ones come in. That's a vital, healthy downtown. Not everybody stays and not everybody wants to do small business retail forever. So I believe we're relevant in helping these small businesses message, helping them stay relevant, helping, helping them through. In 2016, we said, saw the last 15th Annual Apple Harvest Fest, Taste of the Harvest, Harvest Fest, however you want to call it, was our last. And it was September last year. We tried for three years when we lost the farmer's market to try to make it relevant. And honestly, it never recovered. It was a great community day that took a lot of work and a lot of energy, and it became less and less important, I think. So we, a hard part for organizations like ours is, when is it okay? I did a presentation for Main Street on this, when do you say goodbye to it? And a longstanding event. We did. So there will be no Harvest Fest in September. We recognized another event happening by another organization in downtown called Hoedown. It's a Sunday, over 5,000 people and 200 volunteers. I get it, relevant. You, by the power vested in us, you will be good. And so we, we just want to do it smarter, not necessarily do it because we've always done it. As you know, we had a little challenge, right? My not-so-happy-new-year, I call it. When the BNO money went before my eyes in minutes, I knew the challenge ahead was going to be one. We've been talking about this for three years, right? We've been trying to go to the legislature. I will give you some good news. What has been kind of for six years, an issue I have had, is the Main Street programs that don't necessarily follow the Main Street path. But because of how the legislation for this BNO tax credit was written, there were no rules to support the effort. There were, there were guidelines, but no rules. And without rules, you cannot enforce the program. So I got to attend several meetings this year, and I can thankfully say the rules are in place now to enforce the Main Street tax credit incentive. Meaning, if you're a Main Street program and you aren't following the rules, you don't get to play. You don't get the money automatically. We couldn't do that without rules. So those rules were passed, and there were 34 communities on not-so-happy-new-year vying for this money, and it went within minutes. Most of it within the first 45 minutes of the new year. And that was a really long sleepless night as I waited to drop the bomb come, couple of days later. And in the middle of the night, I decided we had a choice to make as an organization, and I had a choice to make. What do we do? Do we hunker down and hide? That's not my MO. So we adopted Dory this year as a board, and we decided we were just gonna keep swimming. Because we believe that what we do for downtown, what we do for this community is important. And so we have tried really hard to get some new contacts, new sponsors, but still, we have a challenge, right? We have to get through the next few months. So now that, thank God, the last day of this long legislative six-month session, we passed. And so the Main Street Tax Credit Incentive Program after three years was successful in raising the cap now to $2.5 million. But the biggest, oh, thank the Lord, was the dialing for dollars at midnight is no more. We fixed it. So the second Monday of the year, the gates open, and all accredited, qualified Main Streets split that equally. We have three months to get our equal portion, and right now, that's between 96, 98,000, depending, because there have been programs that aren't meeting the rules, so we've had to not qualify, right? So whatever the qualifying programs, they will split that evenly. We have till the end of March to get our portion. And then whatever is left, the first of April, then goes in for dialing for dollars so we can get to our one, you know, 133,000, which is our cap. So we heard loud and clear that this was a crazy thing. And Main Streets tried to mitigate that. Some Main Street managers acquired passwords and helped people do this at midnight, which I really didn't think was very good. So the, our four contributors next year gave to multiple Main Streets. But what we heard loud and clear was this was crazy, and we agreed. And thankfully, the legislation was passed, and we are good to go the second Monday in January. So like the two before me, we're here to ask for money, because that seems to be your MO tonight, right? We know that your intent to give what it was through the Main Street Tax Credit Incentive Program, the 25%, I believe was a part and considered in your general budget. So we asked for that, plus a little more, so I have a little letter for you in Ask. We just want to do it better and do it smarter, and be good support to these small businesses that are up against incredible challenges. And we have a good, vibrant, healthy downtown. Our Possibilities Tour, which you got to go see some of these spaces, Mayor, I think you were with me, and, oh my gosh, right? We are seeing this housing, we're seeing this interest to revitalize these now 120,000 new square feet downtown upstairs. So we just are really encouraged. Invite you to the Fall Possibilities Tour. It happens in September. It is hosted by Washington Federal, and we will tour that building because they will be vacating that. And so we will tour that old, as you know, Bank of America building, because that is also slated for improvement. And that will be really fun. And then the other thing I invite you to celebrate with us is, when I came back from Mexico, changed, you know, I, I, I said, I learned a lot in the back of a van for eight days.
Sitting next, sitting next to me, right?
Sitting next to me, praying that I would not die next to my mayor. No offense, Mayor, but that's not the way I intended to go in a roundabout with Ruth Driving. But when I came back, what struck me about that trip was color, was the celebration of color. I came back and all I could remember was color and how hospitable they were to us. So we reached out to some sponsors, one of them being the Parks and Art Board, or Arts and Parks Board, sorry Dave, whatever we're called. So we reached out and got money to pay for Celebrating Culture Banner Project. And Lincoln Elementary embraced it. We received over 500 pieces of colorful art celebrating culture. We narrowed that down to 30, and those are all paid for, and we have the money secured to pay for those, and they will be up come fall. And those kids, you'll be pretty impressed with what culture means to our community. And those over 500 kids, I'll give you one little hint, one of them was done by a child who is legally blind. So it is a little bit of a Braille look, but it is pretty cool. And so those banners will go up. So thank you for your support, and we're here. Any questions for us?
Well, help me with the timing of the Main Street Tax Credit and when you get the money, when the city contributes.
The city typically-
Is it this year that the struggle, or is it next year's struggle?
A little bit of both right now, a little bit of both. It's how the money comes in. So what we've done with the money we've received from, we had thankfully Confluence Health that said, this didn't work, but we believe in you, and we're gonna give it to you anyway. We just put that in the bank because we need to start. But we're struggling this year to get through the remainder of this year before sponsors come in, sponsorships. But next year, so the, the 25% needs to be, is usually typically paid by the end of the year.
Right.
31st. And then those tax credits are available, as you know, in January. Next year, we hope you will sign back on and help us with that tax credit incentive again, and we will send a happy little reminder. But yeah, that's the timing. And the struggle, we can pull, we've been able to try to bank some reserves, but we're just trying to be very, very frugal about getting through this year and the first part of next year. Our intent is always to bank that money for the following year. We're, it's gonna take us a while to get back there. Honestly.
So that too will come to finance committee and the normal stuff. And Brad, you got to meet with Deanne and figure out the timing of when we wrote checks and how that all kind of worked.
Any other questions for?
Any questions for the WDA team, since you have them in front of you?
Cheers.
Go team.
You like your coffee cup? That was Ale Trail. We had a good one, by the way. Thank you all very much.
Thanks ladies for being here.
Thanks for being here.
Alright. So we have some action items this evening, and then a couple of public hearings. I think if it's okay, we'll just kind of keep cranking. Pershing Place, we gotta approve the development agreement, and then Mylar, so. Says Donald Nelson, but I don't think either one of you are Donald Nelson, so Kirsten and Gary, I'll leave it up to you guys.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Gary Owen, City Engineer.
A Kirsten Larson, Associate Planner.
And we have, well, I have first a development or a, a bond agreement with Pershing Place developers who are doing a, I don't know, it's about a 26-lot subdivision, I think.
22s.
Just completing it up off the end of Pershing Place, off of Fifth, or right next to east of the King's Orchard Church, if you're familiar with that, a nice little infill project. It's a private road. They've got some work left to do, about $80,000 worth, and, but they're ready to start selling lots and, and moving on on that. So we're more than happy to, we were more than happy to, Donald was, work with, work with them, put together this bond agreement so that they can final their plat and, and start selling some properties and houses out there. So this is something we do pretty commonly. They're almost done. We've done these in all sorts of ranges, all the way from before they've even started turning any dirt to, when they're nearly done. With our old code, I kind of like when this happens, because then we get a, basically a maintenance or warranty bond of 20% of the value of this after they're complete with their improvements, which is, guarantees us, you know, that, that we've got, we've got public sewer and public water in there. It's a private road, and we've also got some public, public pathway, a nice connection from Castle Rock Street to, not Castle Rock-
Orchard.
Orchard Street, excuse me, to Pershing Place there with this.
Do you want me to make a motion for the council to authorize the mayor to sign the improvement agreement for Pershing Place, the planned development subdivision P-16-01 and PRD-16-02?
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Asparza, which is the first one I heard, to authorize the mayor's to sign the improvement agreement for Pershing Place. Questions or comments?
The only question I had is on the end of Pershing Street, it looks like there's gonna be kind of a turnaround. Is that something the city is doing for them, or are they doing that improvement as well?
Well, that cul-de-sac existed there, but it was not-
It didn't have the, the circle to turn around in, did it?
Yeah, there was a big cul-de-sac that was constructed, but it was on private property. So they've dedicated that to the city now, or they're gonna illuminate it and connect the pathway to it that goes over to Orchard Street.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
And the next is the Mylar.
So Mylar is for the major subdivision and planned residential development known as Pershing Place. That received preliminary approval on September 29, 2016, from the hearing examiner. This plat consists of 22 single-family lots, and as Gary mentioned, the circulation is provided by a private lane. They also have included as part of it a five-foot public access pedestrian walkway that goes from Pershing Street to Orchard Street. And the subdivision administrator and city engineer have determined that all the conditions have been met for this action. So staff is recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign the final Mylar for Pershing Place, a planned development P-16-01 and PRD-16-02.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the final Mylar for Pershing Place, a planned development P-16-01 and PRD-16-02. Second.
A motion by Councilmember Poyar, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor's signature on the final Mylar for Pershing Place. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, guys. Do you want me to sign that right after the meeting? You'll have it for me?
Yeah, that's right over there.
That'd be great.
I'll be closing some properties tomorrow. Next item is annexation petition regarding some property on Walnut Street. Matt, are you doing that today?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Parsons, Associate Planner. We've received a 10% annexation petition for a property at the corner of Walnut and, and Stella, basically right just south of Home Depot. It's 1406 Walnut. We, a little bit of, I guess, context, the applicant did a pre-application meeting with us just a few weeks ago for multifamily development there. And so clearly, they would need to connect with sewer, and of course, getting into the city is, is part of that. So that's a little bit of the, the reason for, for applying to annex. The, the, for the pre-app, it was 24 units. Sure that could change as it develops, but that's, that's what, that was the proposal at the time. So I have done a little analysis to see if additional parcels could be included, and there is a potential for another adjacent parcel to the east to be included. There is enough of value, simply based on, on parcel values, however, the assessor's office includes right of way in, in that. And so that creates a little bit of a unknown in terms of what would end up getting certified as a, as a petition for annexation, 60% petition. And so looked at some previous annexations and kind of created some, some estimates of, of what it might be valued at. And so that's where I, I came up with the, it would probably get a value of 58 to 62% for, if, if just the 1406 Walnut signed a petition, but it also included that 1402 Walnut in there, so.
How do we got some weird rules? Could you imagine doing 1406 Walnut and accepting the street and then having the petition denied and leaving 402 as an island all by itself?
Are these, these are still county, right?
Yeah.
Everything green is, is county at that point?
Yes. So either way, there, there will be some, some additional island there.
Yeah. So really, we're, we're at the first of three steps.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, this is the first, I should have-
Yet if we're going to include additional property, we have to do it now, and then it can be decided later whether or not it comes in.
Yes, thank you, that's, that's exactly, I should have included that. Yes, so this is the, the first step of three. And, right, so right now, we are deciding on three things. The boundary, the zoning, which we intend to, to keep the same, and indebtedness, assumption of, of existing indebtedness. Those are the three things being decided here. After council choose to pass a motion, we would create a petition and get signatures, get that certified, and then it'd come back for, for a final hearing.
And, and if in that signature collection process, in that evaluation of 60%, we're not there, it is possible that this one extra parcel would be excluded from then going to the public hearing, right?
It would be-
If they didn't sign.
If they didn't sign-
And it was less than 60% with that piece in there. And it was less than 60% with that piece in there, it would be removed for the third step.
No, we, it, because they'd have to get certified before we could have the hearing. And so we couldn't get it certified.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It would be, we would drop it out. If we included it now and it turned out the assessor said it's less than 60%, we could, that could then be removed and just certified on the 1406.
I think, I believe we would have to have a second, a meeting, a first 10% meeting, is kind of what we call it.
So we'd have to start over.
We have to, that's my understanding.
If they didn't sign and the value was too low.
Yeah, if the assessor for some reason valued Walnut Street at a zillion dollars and all of a sudden, we don't make it.
New input.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, and Glenn Devries, Community Development Director. And part of the concern staff had, given that it's sort of on the cusp of maybe not making it, maybe making it value-wise, is the additional step and the real interest in pursuing multifamily housing and the interest of the property owner and moving that forward and the real need for units. So as part of your consideration, you know, is it worth pursuing the addition, you know, the additional parcel, but maybe then if it doesn't work out delaying the process and then delaying the applicant from moving forward with the multifamily units? Just for your consideration.
What's the timeline? What are we talking about? If, let's say, for example, it doesn't work out, how much time do we lose?
Couple of weeks. We'd have to come back before you.
And do we know any past history of 1402? Were they in favor of the annexation when we were trying to annex the whole area in or do we know anything about them?
We don't know specific properties. I did notify them that they were considered, being considered for an annexation, and I didn't hear from them, and they don't appear to be here tonight, so.
Well, you know, our policies and the policy of the state of Washington clearly indicate that it's anticipated there's a transference of governance in urban growth areas. And I, you know, I like that, you know, that's official state policy. That's state law, and that's our policy. And I like to include just as much as we can with each and every one of these annexations to provide logical boundaries and logical service areas.
I agree.
Yeah, you know.
I don't want to see an island there.
To do that and leave a single lot as an island in there.
I'm not sure I want Walnut Street, though. It's in bad shape.
Well, it's going to stay in bad shape until it comes into the city. I think we're, I think we're realist about that.
You get a little patch job last year.
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation boundary, including the applicant's parcel at 1406 Walnut Street, the parcel at 1402 Walnut Street, and adjacent right-of-way of the 10% annexation petition for property located in an unincorporated area northeast of Stella Avenue and Walnut Street to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as is set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city as North Manatchee Business District, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to approve the annexation boundary, which would include 1406 Walnut Street and 1402 Walnut Street as shown in today's packet. Discussion. Mark, I don't understand what you're saying with the state law. What are you saying? I don't quite understand what you're saying.
It's anticipated that in urban growth areas that there'll be a transference of governance from unincorporated, so unincorporated county government to incorporated cities and towns.
So the state has anticipated that we would be as aggressive as we can in taking on these sorts of things?
It's one of the fundamental foundations of urban growth areas, is urban services and urban services are identified to be most appropriately provided by cities.
So I think, at the end of the day, I think this is the right thing to do, and I don't think the county really wants Walnut Street much longer anyhow. I've got a funny feeling this will pass.
And when, assuming we get to hearing, we'll hear from the owner of 1402 on their feelings of it. It's just now, we include it now so we can start this process and move forward.
And in worst case, if they don't want to be in there, it delays it two weeks. We move forward.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have two public hearing items. The first regarding changes to our city code regarding planned developments. So for public hearings, we'll hear from staff, we'll talk to, talk to staff, we'll turn over to the public for any discussion, and then back to the council for any action they may have for us. So Kirsten, how are you? And I forgot your first name.
Stephen.
Stephen. Stephen, welcome.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to you guys.
Kirsten Larson, Associate Planner. So the ordinance before you guys lays out some proposed code amendments for Title 10 and Title 11 and Title 1 specifically. Chapter 10.42 allows for residential developments, creating nine or less lots or units to be processed as a type-two administrative review application. And then we suggested amended fees to match our current administrative review applications.
Administrative review mean not to a hearing examiner?
Yes. And then the amendments also include Chapter 11.20 to allow for certain types of subdivisions, like short plats, to utilize a shared driveway easement or private lane access easement. Currently, right now, we require that all lots touch a public street or track. So this would benefit developers by not having to dedicate land to that or create flag lots. And then the last amendment is for Chapter 11.32, which creates the ability to do unit lot subdivisions. And this would allow for developments of attached single-family dwelling units where the unit and surrounding land can be sold separately without having to do a binding site plan or condominium. And then fees were established for that as well. And.
Is most of this kind of dedicated to trying to work with infill development and trying to get a little bit.
Yes.
You know, with our housing crisis and trying to be a little bit more flexible with infill?
Yes. So each one of these addresses that on some level of either just making the process more simpler by doing an administrative review or allowing for some more creative types of development on some of our existing smaller lots.
And directly related to some proposals we've had to turn down because our code didn't accept it or just kind of overall staff's thinking that we need to be a little bit more lenient?
We've specifically had lots of calls for like two-lot type subdivision or short plats that wouldn't be able to meet our standards because of the requirement to touch a public street. So those have been, people haven't been able to do those. For the unit lot subdivision, that benefits. We have actually one application that's looking to utilize this soon off of Western. They did a multifamily development, constructed them as townhomes, and they anticipate to use this to be able to sell those units individually.
Excellent.
So that's kind of where these all originated from, was developer-driven.
All right. Questions first?
I have a couple of questions, and unfortunately I can't find my bookmark since we got an updated packet, but the first one had to do with the shared driveway, and there was a mention in there that the shared driveway would have to come up with some kind of a plan that would be approved. And I'm assuming that so that as people buy the property, they have, they're given a document that says this is how a shared driveway works and.
Correct. There's a requirement for a maintenance agreement in there that's signed by the property owners.
The certain portion of it.
Correct.
Is that agreement something that we produce and give to them or we just say, you have to produce this and it has to be approved? And the reason I'm asking you so many questions, I've never had a shared driveway, but I've known several people who've had them, and they've been a huge source of frustration. I'm hoping we can avoid that by having some clearly defined rules that maybe even if a neighbor has a problem with their other neighbor blocking their driveway, it's something that the city can help enforce.
Yes, we can help the applicant with that by providing them a template agreement. They're welcome to do their own, but I happened to work in a jurisdiction that had a sample template, and we can certainly provide that for them and change some names.
I think that would be excellent if we had a kind of a groundwork that says this is what's worked other places, here's your template.
And then they're welcome to provide an alternative that they chose to.
And then the alternative would have to be approved by the city?
Yeah, we'd want to make sure that the, you know, the fundamental components on being able to maintain that facility between the property owners was there. But certainly we want to make it as easy as possible, and the two-lot short plats are really, you know, a lot of times it's, you know, not the large-scale developers doing those types of things, and so the easier and more straightforward, we can make that for folks better.
Okay. I'm assuming the city must have allowed them in the past and we stopped allowing them at some point, and now we want to reallow them?
You know, I'm not too sure.
Do you know the history of it?
I don't know the history, you know, that most jurisdictions around us do allow for them, and these are a caveat that provides a relief valve for those folks who can't provide a tract, who don't have the ability to do it, or even to provide an alternative to doing flag lots, because one of the things that the Planning Commission found in going through the land capacity analysis to the city is that we have flag lots stacking up against flag lots, and it ends up using a lot of valuable land. And in those circumstance, we could allow this deviation, one, for those sites that just can't do the short plat without it, or two, just avoid from doing stacked-up flag lots and have a better use of land.
It does make a lot of sense as long as everybody can get along. So my second question had to do with the maximal lot coverage, because I know there's some rules there that are still kind of fuzzy and gray, and nobody can really tell me why we have some of those lot coverage rules. When you follow all the setbacks, you're still limited depending on the type of zoning you're in, percentage of lot coverage. It seems to me that would help us maximize lots in the city if we didn't necessarily have to follow some of those rules on lot coverage.
And some districts don't have lot coverage standards. They defer to more the, you know, being able to take care of your landscaping, parking, those types of things. The residential districts are tiered on their amount of lot coverage, the amount of lot coverage that you can do increasing when you go to the higher-density districts, but it's a matter of trying to look at the types of land uses, the types of structures, and maintaining a certain amount of open space and feel and character in an area. And so while those can certainly be revisited in the future, but that's when they're originally set up, that's sort of the foundation that they were set upon is to maintain that character. And one of the tools to do that is setbacks or open space or lot cover traffic.
Rather than just the setbacks.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know that I agree with that, but I, that's the best explanation I've had so far.
We'll talk later.
There's different ways to address it, and you can, it's called form-based code, and that can, so they're all definitely.
Form-based codes?
Form-based code, and there are different ways to address character, preserving character in a neighborhood and providing usable space than lot coverage. Actually, the housing code next year probably will, probably look at those types of things, hopefully.
Anything to help maximize our land right now is.
Steve, did you have something to present to us, too, or?
I just wanted to make two notes. First, was there, well, two changes in the code itself from when it came from the Planning Commission to you. One was a Scrivener's error on a dimension for the access road. It did, so we fixed that. That's in your first packet. The second one that generated the supplemental memorandum for you today is in relationship to the length of the access easement and a requirement that the Planning Commission reviewed, that any access easement over 150 feet would require that all the structures, new structures be constructed with sprinkler system, meaning the fire code. And we received a comment today and looked at that, and Glenn, the fire code official looked at that and found that there's sufficient flexibility in the fire code to work with individual property owners, where some instances of sprinkling system would be required, other instances where it would not be required. And so we're recommending tonight as part of the motion that that dimension of 150 feet requiring sprinklers be removed to allow the fire code official to work individually with property owners. And where the code requires sprinklers, they would be required. Where it's not necessarily required, we wouldn't want to put in place a standard that would require that in excess of the fire code. And so we don't think it's a substantial change from the Planning Commission's recommendation, but would hopefully consider that in your motion this evening.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff before we turn it over to the vast member of the public who are here this evening to testify? Any members of the audience wish to testify this evening on this public hearing item? Seeing no takers, I will then turn it over to the council for any action they might be willing to take this evening. Which I guess would include the motion that you've got here with just a note regarding the 150-foot setback and.
That's correct.
Changes in accordance with.
How does that exactly say? Remove the 150-foot setback for fire sprinkler systems?
That's correct. So in the memorandum, the agenda report that's dated today on the second page is a draft motion that we included for your consideration that removes that 150-foot.
Oh, it's already been removed?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So if we just read it as is, we got it?
Correct.
Okay.
So we've provided a clerk with an updated Exhibit B that has the code in it, if that's the direction you choose to go.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay. So, Your Honor, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2017-16, amending the development regulations of the city, including specifically Manatchee City Code, WCC, Chapter 10 dot 42, to allow residential planned developments, which create nine or less lots, tracks, parcel or residential dwelling units to be processed as a type-two administrative review application. WCC, Chapter 11.20, to accommodate provisions for shared driveway easements and private lanes established by access easements when consistent with the review criteria to facilitate infill development. WCC, Chapter 11.32, to add provisions for unit lot subdivisions applying exclusively to divisions of land for attached single-family dwelling units and cottage housing developments, and WCC, Chapter 1.99, related to associated application fees.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution 2017-16 with various amendments to Manatchee City Code regarding development issues.
No, they didn't.
I'm not going to read all the rest of that.
Oh, come on.
Any discussion from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, as long as this discussion's okay.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Ajax, sir, wireless cell expert, a microcell expert.
You sure? Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. John Ajax, Senior Planner. For you tonight is ordinance 2017-15, and if approved, this ordinance would extend our current wireless moratorium for an additional six months to a date of January 25, 2018. And the request is being made largely just because we need some additional time for establishing the formal permitting procedure for the use of the right-of-way, so that is being worked out with our Public Works Department at the moment. So with that, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Anything, weren't we talking about legislation or something? Did anything happen? Or are we still just, or is that next year? They continue to look and we continue to dance the game of us saying we want to be able to regulate them ourselves and the industry saying that don't let cities regulate. Yeah. So I don't.
But nothing's changed.
I don't believe anything has passed the legislature at this point, but I think if the legislative, anything can happen. I mean, they're still in session. There's a capital budget, they're fighting over the Hearst decision and a bunch of other stuff, so who knows? I quit predicting. All right, I would, if there's no questions for staff, I'll turn it over to any members of the audience that wish to discuss this public hearing item with us. that wish to discuss this public hearing item with us. Seeing no takers, I will turn it over to the council for their action.
Your Honor, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2017-15 of the City Council of the City of Wenatchee extending to January 25, 2018 its previously enacted six-month moratorium on the establishment, citing location permitting or licensing of microcell minor facilities and/or small cell facilities as defined by RCW 80.36.375 or the Federal Communications Act of 1934 as amended, located in the right-of-ways, the public right-of-ways, sorry.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Poyer, to adopt ordinance number 2017-15, extending the City of Wenatchee's moratorium on microcell licenses to January 25 of 2018. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. Two or three or four things. I'd say first is, I've been meeting with Brad Posenjack, the Finance Director, talking about the 2018 budget, which is just at the starting processes, and just confirming that the way the city has done the budget for the last three or four years is okay with the council, kind of finance committee-driven. You know, we go through a list of asks, and just want to make sure that that's still okay with the council. You want to have a council workshop on it, or is the way we've been doing it for the last four years okay with the council? Knowing that we'll get you the emails of all the asks, and if there's something specific that a council member has that isn't on the Finance Committee, you would know how to communicate that with either myself or Allison or the department head. Brad comes to a spot where it's a little bit more public and a longer process, and so just confirming that we're okay with the way we've been doing it.
Well, we did make a change this year. We had our retreat earlier in the year, so that that happened prior to the budget process. So I think, I think we're good at the moment.
Okay. Anybody concerned with the way we're gonna go about doing it again?
I like how Brad is gonna meet with all the directors.
He's been doing that already?
Yeah, that's, makes me feel better off.
Your lovely Washington State Supreme Court has recently ruled that cities cannot go into executive session to discuss matters of real estate, either buying or selling. The only thing we can talk about in executive session is the price at which we would sell property. So we used to go in and have discussions about whether we might sell some city property, we might buy some city property, or any of those sorts of things. Those discussions now, I think, have to be in public session. Steve, you gonna help us with that a little bit?
Yeah, let me flush that out a little bit for... It's not quite that bad.
It didn't sound like it was that bad.
As you know, governments have to, the Open Public Meetings Act requires our sessions be open to the public, and most things have to be talked about in public. There's certain exceptions for things that we can talk about in executive session. We use that tool pretty regularly, often to talk about real estate. And you have two, two common things, you know, either you're selling or leasing property, city property, or you might be buying or entering into a lease for another type of property. So two different types of things, and there's two different provisions in the executive session law pertaining to those. So the Supreme Court case actually dealt with the selling of government property, and it was the Port of Vancouver that got sideways on this one. And they were considering leasing property, and they were talking about factors that affect the price, which might include environmental factors, size of the lot, you know, very different aspects of their property that would affect the price. What the Supreme Court said is that under the statute that allows an executive session on this topic is, and the statute's very specific, it says for purposes of talking about minimum price, you can go into executive session. So the Supreme Court strictly interpreted that to say you can only go into executive session to talk about minimum price. You can't talk about all these other factors that affect the price. Now, obviously, those things all weigh on the price, but the court said that you have to talk about those factors in open session, then go into executive session to actually set the minimum price, and that's what you're limited to talk about, and then you come out. It does not affect the buying of property. The exception for buying of property is a lot more general. It doesn't have that just-talk-about-minimum-price provision, so. So it was, it was not as bad as, you know, that you thought, man.
Yeah, that was the first run-by on Tuesday on there.
Yeah.
If that involved, you know, the buying, I mean, that, that would be...
Yeah, so...
I mean...
So I just sent a notice to the mayor and staff indicating that we need to be aware of this, because we often use this tool when we're talking about real estate, you know, usually in the, well, on either side, buying or selling. And we have some coming up, so we'll be talking about these things. So we just need to be cognizant of this issue, and I'll try to be alert to it so that we don't get sideways with it. We just need to be more careful of it. I think the practical impact is that staff will be talking about this, probably in-depth, you know, these factors that go into price, probably talking to the mayor, but then when it comes to council, that stuff will be pretty well hashed out. And, you know, if you want to talk about those details about how we arrived at the price, it's gonna be a little bit glossed over, and if we want to get into it, it's gotta be an open public session.
Okay.
That's kind of the drawback of it, but that's what the law says, so.
Public business is to be conducted in public.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Steve.
You bet.
Allison, what else was I supposed to talk about that was on my list?
Well, I think the big thing is, next week, we are opening the storefront again.
Okay.
So we have space reserved at the former Palmer Shoe Space. We've been gathering information from all of our departments. Anna and Tammy have been busy, busy getting things together. We'll have a schedule where we're gonna try to have staff there, or it could be council members or others from 11 to 2, Monday through Friday. And so we're gonna kick it off on Monday at 11, down there with the ribbon cutting, and then we'll conclude it on Friday, August 4, with a cake in celebration of our 125 years. And Anna, do you want to do a highlight of your magnets that...
Oh, yes. Let me hand them up.
Okay. We're just trying to make sure that we're out there. We have lots of projects that we want to highlight in there, and what we've been hearing from people is they would really love an opportunity in a publicly accessible space to be able to talk about what's coming. And so particularly when you think about things like the North Wenatchee Form and Function Study, or other projects, development areas, plans...
Thank you.
We will have all of that available. And this, the, the...
Thank you.
These are refrigerator magnets, and that...
They have a QR code.
Yeah, the QR code goes straight to our GoRequest page, so for citizens who want to send us suggestions, or compliments, or things that we need to follow up on, so...
Our high-speed Wi-Fi again. And just to be clear, those of us who are running can't be in the booth talking to people, but we can show up and see what it's all about and be there for the ribbon cutting and...
Right.
Where's the ribbon cutting again?
Monday at 11. And then next week is a busy week for us with lodging tax, TPA, directors on Thursday, public safety, and then you've got two work session items for next Thursday night.
Which are?
So we are gonna have, the planning department wants to bring their work set, their work plan to you, and then we need to do a review of the local revitalization financing and the waterfront parking analysis, and get some feedback from council on the implementation of that.
A couple items of finance. Our jail numbers are down to the point that we're, we budget $1,007,000. We always think we're gonna get about $1,006,000 is gonna be where the numbers fit, but actually we're down low enough that it's gonna be $1,005,000. So we're gonna have a couple hundred thousand dollars for the savings out of our jail contract. So we're excited about that. We, you will see in the next couple of weeks, the Bruce Hotel has had some issues with a sewer pipe that busted. It's not our sewer pipe, it's their sewer pipe that busted. Of course, they don't have the money to fix the sewer pipe, so we did meet with the people that run the Bruce Hotel. We met with our housing staff and determined that we had $100,000 of emergency funds that, if the council so chose, could be allocated to the Bruce. So we talked about that on Tuesday, and then we got a letter today from the housing folks or yesterday that said our allocation's increased by $307,000 that we didn't know about. So only at the City of Wenatchee could you lose $100 and the next day gain $300. So I'm not sure how that all happens, but it's been one of those sorts of little time periods there. So you may see something in the next couple of weeks regarding some emergency money of, from our housing funds to help the Bruce Hotel flush away their problem, if you will. Allison, anything else for the good of the order?
I think that's it. We had a great visit this week with WSU folks up at the Tracer Research Center.
Yep, WSU folks were in town, just getting them engaged in a couple of different sorts of, you know, they got the Drive to 25. They want to be one of the top 25 research institutions in the U.S., so we're trying to get them excited about, you know, blockchain technology, the medical stuff, because they now have a medical school, just more stuff with the ag, and then the hydro research stuff, trying to, he and he's pretty excited about doing some hydro research stuff around the dams and how do you plan better, and so, real interesting meeting with that. And of course, Gene Sheridan is cheerleading our way through that, so. All right. I guess that's all we have. I guess we'll see you next, yes, Anna Banana?
National Night Out, August 1.
August 1, yep.
Daniel Park. Either of these lists.
Right down there. Okay. We're adjourned.
Thank you.